The Brookings County Commission meeting Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, on behalf of the individual, the liberty and justice of our all.
This morning, Dave Miller is absent, but he is on via phone attending the meeting. So fellow commissioners can make sure we speak into the microphone so Dave can hear us. Item number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any additions or corrections?
Under routine business, finance officers report, there is no register of deeds statement of fees collected. This time that will be presented at the next meeting. So that item under the be it noted items can be deleted.
Where's that at?
Routine business, six, finance officers report, and then be it noted, item D at the very end.
Payroll additive?
No, D as in dog, the register of deeds statement of fees.
Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign? Motion carried. Item number four on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There is a five minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action items may be scheduled for a future meeting date. This morning, we do have two sign in sheets, one for our regular meeting, and the other one is for after our pipeline informational meeting. They're both back. I guess they're up here now.
The nine o'clock sign in is still back there for anybody coming in before nine, but this one has no one signed in on it for the regular meeting.
Okay, we do not have any for the regular meeting. So move on to item number five, consent agenda items, which includes minutes, travel and education, personnel action notices, cellular authorization, human services report. Do I have motion to approve?
Still moved.
Have motion and second. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six is routine business. Item A is approval of the claims. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments? Any questions? Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item B on the routine business, Department Heads' Report. Brian from the Highway Department?
Good morning. A couple of things coming up here. We do have a bridge project here that was let earlier this year in August. We are going to have a pre-construction meeting on that. I'm not sure quite what the timeline is yet, but we are going to be looking at doing some construction on a bridge on County Road 27, a quarter mile south of Highway 14. Like I said, this project was led on August 7th and was approved by the Brookings County Commission on August 20th with DOT concurrence. The project is sitting around 1.528, so about 1.5 million. There again, this was a grant in 2021, and the match for this project will be 40% Brookings County funds. We recently approved amendment to the agreement with this project, so we will be receiving 75% of our funds to pay for this as far as our 40% goes. I guess, is there any questions on that that I need to bring up at the meeting that you guys have?
Any concerns?
Nope.
And secondly here, we are going to be doing our annual supplies and materials bid opening on the 11th of February, and also our 2025 Brookings County overlay will be opened on February 11th. Aside from that, I do not have much, other than it's real cold, but we don't have to push the cold.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you.
Thanks.
Sheriff?
Good morning. See, I put an updated detention center report on your desk this morning that on the last page, and it says calls for service for the area contract towns was wrong, the one I sent to you, and the corrected amount of calls is now on that that area. We have 45 presently in jail. 15 are from Brookings County. The rest are from Mata County. Just quickly, on the 24/7 program, we have 121 participants, which is down. We usually are running 140s. So going to look at that as a good thing. Less people we have on there, that's hopefully it's less drinking out there that are being arrested. PBTs seem to stay up there, there's 55, they come in twice a day, so that's 110 to visit with us. 12 on remote breath test. We have 12 on SCRAM and 42 on UAs. So those 42 come in twice a week to give a sample. Seven on drug court, two on Hope Court, and 12 on DUI court. Other than that, we can stay busy at the jail. A lot of them from other agencies come in with arrests, but a lot of them are booked in and released right away. Other than that, fire departments have been busy. We had that fatality in that fire south of town, which we turn that over to the fire marshal. So we've become an assist agency on that, and there the fire marshal is a little behind right now because he's had that fire in Brookings at Bros', and then there was a fatality fire in Millbank, and then there was a fatality fire in Mowbridge. So fire marshal's been kept busy, so he's coming back this week and work with my investigators and so forth. So other than that, unless you guys have some questions?
Any question, Marty? Thank you. Lori with Finance?
Nothing out of the ordinary. Thank you.
Bob with Planning Zoning?
Good morning. The big thing is I passed out vests to all the new commissioners and some older commissioners. There's a form there I request that you fill out for me, so I can get you an ID card made. What each person will get will be a ID card such as this. So if you do go to an emergency operations center, all you got to do is scan the card to have your credentials per se, whatever you've got, in most of your cases county commissioners, some of your firemen. So all those credentials are on that ID card and allow you to access the EOC. Plus, I've seen the vest used more when we've had natural disasters such as wind damage and stuff like that. I've seen county commissioners come out with that vest on with chainsaws, and it really helps show the public that you're that you're out there working with it. So that's why we pass the vest out, so I can identify you as a county commissioner and go from there. Everything else is on my staff report, and of course, I will be back up at nine o'clock. Is there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Any other department heads? I don't see any. Okay, moving on to documents received, Sheriff's Office, County Development Department, and the Highway Department. Item C is finance officers report, be it noted items, auditor's account with the treasurer, payroll and additive totals, and highway expenditure report. Annual be it noted, item D, annual be it noted items, 2025 wage list listing, and volunteers listed for work comp purposes. Item A is the, under the volunteers for work comp purposes, Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Range Safety Officers. Do we need to approve these, or?
No, these are just be it noted items, just to be noted in the minutes.
Okay. If you look through the list, and also the severe weather storm spotters. Okay. It's not nine o'clock yet, so we'll move on to regular business. Item eight is regular business, first reading of ordinance number 2025-01, and ordinance, amending ordinance number 2024-01, the Brookings County zoning ordinance as amended. Action, the first, it'd be the first reading, the title only. Note, the second reading will be Tuesday, February 4th at 9:00 AM. Moving on to item B, is action to approve resolution number 25-05, a resolution amending the joint cooperative agreement for the management of the Brookings City County Government Center. Do I have motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments?
This is the document that creates the Joint Powers Board for the government center here. If you recall at our last meeting, you had appointed me as one of the voting members on that board. This agreement had listed two county commissioners as representatives for the county, so this amends that agreement to allow for staff and/or county commissioners to be voting members on that board. The city will be approving a similar resolution. Wanted to get this done and out of the way before our first meeting coming up here in February, I believe.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approve resolution number 25-06, a resolution setting weight limit enforcements on Brookings County highways. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second. Any comments?
I know a couple of you guys are new, so I wanted to make sure that you guys seen the list that does get submitted to the state, and then you can also see the letter to the Highway Patrol requesting assistance for the enforcement of these weight limits. I wanted to ensure you that this was what we sent, and the roads that are listed to be posted when it comes time to post the spring load limits. So typically, we work with other counties, so we aren't kind of the Lone Ranger when it comes to having our postings signed. You know, once the signs are up, they are enforceable, but like I said, we do work with our neighboring counties to ensure that we're kind of all in the same boat together as it comes to our borders. So if there's any questions on that, just wanted to let you guys know that, or feel free to reach out to me.
These roads typically don't change year to year. Is there any additions, corrections that?
The only addition, Larry, I did do this right away, it'd be bullet point number 18, is County Road 16A that we recently took over, the two and a half miles between County Road 21 or 34th Avenue to the city limits of Aurora.
Okay. Cause?
And that's the only gravel that we have posted, we or will be posting, none of our other gravels are posted.
But this is also the road that we plan on doing a seal coat?
Correct.
To, so, just kind of planning ahead there then?
Yep.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Call a roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action approve resolution number 25-07, a bridge inspection program resolution for use with South Dakota DOT retainer contracts. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments?
So as you guys may recall, or some of you guys that are new, this is just to kind of update you, we do our bridge inspections annually. Half the county on the west side of the interstate was done last year. This will be for the other half, which is on the east side of the interstate, that'll be performed this year. That's my recommendation that we stick with Banner and Associates, as this is our second year coming into switching from the biannual to annual.
Okay. Any questions? Call a roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action approve resolution number 25-08, a plat of lots 29 and 30 in Turtle Bay Road right away of Turtle Bay Edition located in the south half of Government Lot One in the northeast quarter of Section 29, Township 109 North, Range 50 West of the Fifth Primorinian, and in portion of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 29, Township 109 North, Range 50 West of the Fifth Primorinian, and a portion of Government Lot Two in the southwest quarter of Section 28, Township 109 North, Range 50 West of the Fifth Primorinian, all in Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments?
Yes, sir. This was heard on January 7th about a Brookings County Planning Commission approved unanimously and sent to this board with a recommendation that you approve it.
Okay. Any questions for Planning Zoning? Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F is action approve abatement number 25-01, an abatement application made by H.J. Tellinghueson in the amount of $122.33 for parcel number 01999-00201-001-00. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments?
Um, this is a mobile home that has been pulled into the trees years ago. There is no roof on it anymore. It's not livable.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Call a roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, action approve agreement number 25-05, and an application for occupancy of the right of way of county highway made by Brookings Municipal Utilities in Aurora. Do I have motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments?
This will be to install fiber optic cable out to the project that was done last year by BMU along 18A, which is just a mile south of Highway 14 to their new Wellhead site.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign? Motion carried. Item H, action approve agreement number 25-06, a Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract between Brookings County and Duell County. Do I have motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Comments? Any?
I did raise the contract from $95 a day to 105 for the contract towns.
Okay. Any other questions? Call a roll.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I, action approve agreement number 25-07, a Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract between Brookings County and Hamlin County. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and second. This is the same as the last one. Any other comments or questions? Call a roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item J, action approve agreement number 25-08, a Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract between Brookings County and Kingsbury County. Do I have motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any other questions? Call a roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number K is action to approve and adopt the Brookings County Detention Center policy and procedure manual. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments?
Just to update the two new commissioners, is that by state law, 24-11-23 is the governing body or commission responsible for the operation of the jail. In other words, you guys are, you guys are in charge of the operation of jail, but you put that into, for me to do the day to day operation of the jail, which is nice that I have a jail administrator that also assists. So what this is, is just you're adopting the policies for the jail. By statute, there's 11 things that have to be in that policy manual, which is in there plus a lot more. The state of South Dakota does not have a lot of regulations when it comes to jails, so I, we have to rely on the American jail standards and our insurance company claims associate. We get a lot of our policies from our insurance company that, that we have for, for the sheriff's office and so forth. So we have to be responsible for our own training program and those types of things. So there's a lot more than those 11 things. These 11 things are in the policy manual with a lot more. The retired jail administrator, Bart Siewe, started a good platform before he left, and then Dave Beitler, the jail administrator and the jail sergeant have taken the task over to complete the jail policies and so forth. So, you have any questions?
Marty, the only que, I've asked you this before, will this policy and procedure help with the holding of juveniles, or is that another?
That's a, that's a whole other policy.
Okay, but this is the first part of it.
Right, right.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item L, action approve CDBG payment request number three in the amount of $217,984.84 for the Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Construction Project. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments?
These you will see occasionally come through as this project progresses, but this is the community development block grant dollars that the, that we received from the state for the construction project for Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness. We are sort of our kind of the conduit for these funds, so these funds will come to the county. We will turn around and pay them back out then to Brookings Behavioral Health, who then pays the bills. So, but they had to have the governmental entity apply for this CDBG grant. So we'll see the money come in, and once we get the check, we'll automatically supplement that and spend, pay that back out.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed same sign? Motion carried. Item M, action approve a proposal number 13923 from Midwest Petroleum Equipment for $19,673.44 for a new fuel system at the Highway Department. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and second. Comments?
I asked Sean to be here to speak on this, but I see he has a letter here that written to you guys. The main reason for this is the software that supports this current equipment is out of date, and we've been notified by the fuel company that they no longer support any of that old software. This would just be the physical addition of the new interfaces for our diesel and gas pumps, and then I did reach out and make sure that in the event that we do decide to relocate down the road, this equipment would be able to be transferred. I kind of figured that question may come up, but it is transferable, and it pretty much mimic what we do have out there. There might be a few changes, but the biggest thing is the software interface that it was working with is out of date and is no longer supported by the company.
Okay. Any questions? Brian, this, this has nothing to do with the pumps or the storage containers.
It's just the pumps itself, Larry.
Okay.
Was it, the pumps are still working, they're just, there's no way to record what's going through?
The pumps are still currently operational. We had a fuel issue this last summer, and in order to remedy that, it was, it was very time consuming for the Midwest Petroleum to remedy that issue. I'm not exactly sure of all the technical jargon that went on out there, but that's when they notified us, Doug, that, that they would no longer support that old software.
And this tracks usage on each truck and vehicle in the county and stuff like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Item N, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a full-time male correctional officer in a detention center. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion a second, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed same sign? Motion carried. Item O, action approve a request to fill vacancy for a part-time female correctional officer in detention center. Have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion a second, any comments here? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed same sign? Motion carried. I think we'll stop there, we'll, we do have a scheduled nine o'clock. Proposed CO2 pipeline update and discussion. I have asked Mr. Hill with planning and zoning and our emergency management to give us an update and share some documents with us. Bob, would you please come forward? And if there's anybody that would like to speak after this presentation, the sign-in sheet is back here on the corner, so.
Good morning again, commissioners and guests, citizens. My name is Robert Hill and I'm the Brookings County Emergency Manager and the County Development Director. We are going to be discussing what Brookings County has been doing with our comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and some of the knowledge that we have working with an organization called Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration. You're going to hear the terminology called FEMSA. And every fire department in Brookings County has got a copy of the Emergency Response Guidebook. It covers the natural gas, liquid petroleum, and CO2. So the first responders, I feel, know what, what the CO2 is capable of doing, so. And I actually used to work as a special government employee, unpaid. It was a volunteer on the Gas Pipeline Advisory Committee for FEMSA from 2013 to 2020. So. Relating strictly to Brookings County, our zoning ordinance, we, we started our zoning ordinance in 2008 by applying for a FEMSA grant called a technical assistance grant. We've ended up with, I do believe, at least two, if not three, technical assistance grants since 2008 to do things such as write the transmission pipeline overlay in our zoning ordinance. We've also used the FEMSA technical assistance grants to have pipeline exercises. We've had pipeline exercises with Basin Electric Power Cooperative up by White. And we've also had pipeline training and exercises with Northern Natural Gas here in Volga. And we went to Hanson County where we dealt with the liquid petroleum companies as a, as a regional exercise with the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management Region 6. So strictly to Brookings County now, our comprehensive plan was written in 2016 and it, it talks about development constraints in the unincorporated areas of the county. Pipelines is listed, it says this development constraint category has been designated based upon the proximity to oil and gas transmission pipelines located in Brookings County. Special considerations should be given to preventing and/or limiting some forms of development to occur unless coordinated precautionary measures are instituted. Then our zoning ordinance itself was approved last year or updated last year, 2024. And under the agricultural land district, which the majority of Brookings County does fall under, under permitted uses in section 4.01.02, private and, public and private utility transmission lines, pipelines, and reservoirs are considered permitted uses. Which means in, in, they don't need to come through the Brookings County zoning commission to get permission to do a pipeline. What does kick in when doing pipelines in Brookings County is any above-ground facility that's bigger than 10 foot by 12 foot. We've got several facilities in Brookings County on the pipelines that are above-ground buildings, so they have to come through and get a conditional use permit. So if they've got a station to run such as a Smart Pig or something like that, an above-ground station, they'd have to come in and get a conditional use permit for that particular item. The commission also asked me to talk about, well, what if we want to change the zoning ordinance? Our, our existing zoning ordinance has a section called 6.05.03 zoning amendments. These can be amending the actual zoning ordinance itself or a rezoning request, such as if someone's in agricultural district and, and they're close to a city and they want to go R1 or something like that, they can, they could do a rezoning. Sometimes it happens around lakes. And on that, basically, you simply takes 20% of the landowners in the zoning district. So if you're, it'd be 20% of the citizens of Brookings County would sign a petition and then they could come in and request that the zoning ordinance be amended. And it would have to have a site plan and, and they'd have to, it goes into, once that, once that's given to us, once the change is given, then we follow our procedures for regular upzone, updating the zoning ordinance, which is 10 days prior to the hearing, there has to be anyone in that area. Well, the, the problem is we got rezonings and then we got changing the zoning in, in the, or changing the zoning ordinance itself. So to change the zoning ordinance, not rezone, but to change the zoning ordinance, Brookings County Board of County Commissioners has to publish the notice of the public hearing and the legal newspaper of the county. Such notice published not less than 10 days prior to the county commissioner or public hearing. That comes after the Brookings County Zoning Commission or Planning Commission reviews the ordinance and either approves or disapprove and then resend it to the county commission for the final either approval or disapproval. So any changes to the zoning ordinance still has to come through the county planning commission and then the final yes or no comes to the county commission itself on that particular ordinance. Whereas conditional uses do not come typically to the county commission. They stay in the zoning, uh, planning commission side, but the actual regulations do come through you guys. Back in, I told you I started in 2008 with the National Association of Counties. There was actually a FEMSA, once again, the pipeline and hazardous material safety administration. They had a, a working group called Pipelines and Informed Planning Alliance called PIPA. And they looked at both natural gas and liquid and hazardous materials. And they sent out a summary for elected and appointed county officials. And I'll be more than happy to get that to anyone that would like it. I, I passed out a handout to the county commission on a summary for carbon dioxide pipeline safety for policymakers. I got this from the Pipeline Safety Trust. For those who don't know what the Pipeline Safety Trust is, many years ago in Bellingham, Washington, there was a natural gas line leak. There was three young men fishing and the natural gas migrated down the stream. It caught fire, killed those three, three individuals. And they got a humongous grant of, of like $10 million. And that community, they started the Pipeline Safety Trust. It is one of the renowned safety pipeline, that's not related to the government, one of the, one of the watchdogs of pipelines. And like I said, they, it's all going to come back to that Mississippi incident that happened in 2020. And that's when they produced, in 2022, FEMSA, the feds, federal government, once again, they, they actually took a look at what happened in Mississippi and then they decided to go ahead and start some regulations. And, um, which is what we're going to end up. I, I, we had the big pipeline meetings in the last week. And those, one commissioner went to Sioux Falls, one went to Des Moines, I went to Watertown. And they, they kept bringing up this new FEMSA document on regulating CO2 pipelines or safety of carbon dioxide and hazardous liquid pipelines. So I think it's going to be interesting when we start to, I know later on you guys are going to look at doing a subcommittee for the actual ordinance itself. FEMSA actually has a 346-page document that talks about CO2 pipelines itself that since it's, it's dated January 10th, 2025, obviously it's not included in our zoning ordinance. So I feel it would be beneficial when we look at that, there, it looks like there's 18 parts to this that they're adding to the pipeline regulations. So it looks like there'd be some good information in there that we can take a look at and possible use. There's other documents that are available, studies on CO2 and what happened in the past. And the Pipeline Safety Trust also has a, a local government guide to pipelines, participation, preparedness, and pipeline safety, which I can also share with anyone that would like it. And then of course, we do have our pipe, transmission pipeline overlay, which we can discuss. It was, it was initially done in 2009, once again with that technical assistance grant and the Code of Federal Regulations 190 through 195. And 190 is natural gas, 195 would be your liquid. There we actually, we've got a consultation zone inside our zoning ordinance. The consultation zone is anytime people's doing anything within 660 feet, they need to consult with the, with the people that own the pipeline. And that's to keep both, both parties from doing some damage. The biggest problem in pipelines, except Mississippi, which had land, land movement and hilly conditions and everything that I read about Mississippi, and I got the complete study from FEMSA, which is online also, that it was massive land movement and massive amounts of rain. One thing about the new FEMSA study is the 48 inches, they specifically address agricultural land, which we consider Brookings County to be an agricultural county. That 48 inches that the people were referring to in some of the meetings that they've had, that 42 inches is going to be mandated by law. Right now for a regular, like, natural gas pipeline, it is 36 inches. But for, if the CO2 regulations are passed, it's going to become 48 inches for CO2 pipelines. So I think that's a, that's a good thing. And that's the kind of stuff that we can, we can add to the zoning ordinance. And of course, our zoning ordinance was focused, we got a planning zone also, which is, which you take the right of way, a lot of the planning zone has to do with the extent if the pipeline has a, has a rupture. And that, that's based off natural gas. We would have to get, as, as the CO2 hearings progress through the Public Utilities Commission, there's a lot of information we're going to end up asking the Public Utilities Commission about on this particular pipeline to help us figure out how to, how to make it work in Brookings County, if that's the sole desire. And of course, we, we bring up liquid pipelines in the zoning ordinance, although we have none because we don't currently have any in place. But to determine the appropriate planning zone distance for hazardous liquid pipeline is much more complex because of the varying flow characteristics. And that's something I did not realize until I read the FEMSA accident report coming out of Mississippi. That's a 24-inch pipeline, major, major pumping pipeline. The pipeline they're proposing for Brookings County is a 6-inch pipeline. So you're not going to have anywhere near the amount of CO2 sitting in that, in that pipe at the time. And it looks like they, the safety background of that particular company, when they figured out there was a leak, they, they closed some valves, but I didn't specifically see how far the valves were from, from each side. So that's where it's going to take some research. CO2, obviously, from, from some of the injury reports I've seen from CO2, such as, the biggest problem with, with any pipeline, whether it's the CO2 liquid or natural gas, is what's known as third-party damage. It's people going out there and hitting pipelines of back holes. I saw one video where a back hole punctured a pipe and the operator, he backed out and didn't die from it, but he got frostbite because CO2 produces, produces cold, obviously. So, and that was a smaller, smaller version pipeline. So, you know, obviously anytime, from an emergency manager standpoint, yes, pipelines, there's a safety factor behind pipelines, there's a safety factor behind railroads and a safety factor behind our interstate systems going down the road. And I would encourage anyone, even if you drive to Sioux Falls, look at any tanker truck that you see and start paying attention to those little diamonds on the side of those, those trucks. And there's some dangerous stuff being carried, whether it's in pipelines, trucks, UPS trucks, you name it. There's some, some serious, contagious, hazardous materials out there and we just need to be careful. Any questions? That's, that's our ordinance is in a nutshell.
Bob, you, you talked on, if 20% of the residents in an area request to change the zoning ordinance, define an area, would it, what would define?
The way that's written, and of course I'd, I'd have to, I can't ask him now because he hasn't had the question asked before. But it'd be my, my planning guess that it would be the county. It'd be 20% of the county. Because you're not looking at just rezoning, you're not looking at rezoning a property like, like my house area. If you was looking at that, then you could define the area directly around it. But if you're looking at doing, doing the ordinance, because what you have to realize, you start regulating a liquid pipeline here, is that going to pertain to the natural gas pipeline that we got in another part of the county? So it's extremely hard to make an ordinance only for one little portion of the, of the county. A zoning ordinance for a county should pertain to the whole county, in my opinion. But we could take that to the, to the state's attorney at a later time.
So separate township ordinances wouldn't be in, finer they would be, because that's a separate governmental body.
Yeah, the state of South Dakota doesn't allow, they, the zoning enabling powers is at the county level.
When you say 20%, Bob, that's 20% of registered voters, correct?
I guess I would have to, one second. Let me take a look. Okay. Individuals. I should have put page numbers on my pages. Let's see. Initiated petitions specifying and requesting amendments to the regulations of this ordinance containing signatures of 20% of the landowners may be presented to the zoning official. So it, it doesn't specify any ordinance. Once again, that would have to be taken to the state's attorney's office for final definition or clarification of that particular. As a note, the planning official is not a lawyer and does not speak legally.
Okay, thank you.
That's, I just, landowner is a tough definition to kind of come up with, because does city count then or not, or?
Once again, once again, Commissioner, I'm not, I don't know, we would have to...
Bob, you mentioned planning zone. The next zone above that is...
The consultation zone.
Within that consultation zone, would there be room for negotiating setbacks in that area?
I would think so. What the consultation zone is, is you're not getting a building permit unless the pipeline company or whoever owns the utilities there gives you, gives us a written statement saying, yes, hey, what you're doing there. Because if you bring in certain equipment right next to a pipeline and start pounding into the ground, you could do some severe damage to it. But that's why we make them consult, just talk to each other. We're not, we're not trying to prohibit people from doing anything on their land. We just want it done safely so no one gets hurt while, while doing it.
Okay. And you touched on also permitting and, and that for above-ground, and you gave the dimensions for the above-ground. Companies go through, if it's not Brookings County, with the zoning for permits. Where do, where do companies like this go to for their permitting?
Typically, oh...
For the, for the pipeline itself?
Typically through the public utility, the Public Utilities Commission is typically the one that permits the pipeline.
Okay. So for us in, in Brookings County, they wouldn't come to the county for, say, to, for the permit, they would go through the PUC. And then if the PUC approves or declines, then that is, they're the kind of the governing body for the underground pipelines?
For the underground portion. And then if they do anything above-ground, then that's where the planning office gets involved.
Kind of like up on the bypass where the natural gas buildings are and stuff like that, just as one that comes to my mind?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's Northern Natural Gas. That's, that's the actual natural gas feed for Northwestern that supplies gas. But that, the actual pipeline itself is Northern Natural Gas coming out of Kingsbury County.
Okay.
A little more clarification on 660-foot consultation zone, is that on each side? So it's, or is it 330 on each side of the line?
Take a look.
There's a whole 1,320-foot.
Okay, you got the consultation zone, which is 660 on each side. So starting at the middle, 660, 660.
So it's a quarter-mile-wide swath.
And then you've got the planning zone, and that's where it comes in tighter, where you require, that's when you can do damage to the pipe if you're not careful. The consultation zone is just, you know, if you're building in a consultation zone, typically what happens is these, these, whoever owns the pipeline, runs, runs the pipeline, they, they typically do airplane flyovers and they spot people doing stuff near the They probably would catch them in the consultation zone. And it's our job in the planning office to catch them in the planning zone, make sure they don't, don't get that close to it.
This may not be a question that you're familiar with, but is the easement proposed for the entire consultation zone, or are they taking a much narrower swath on that?
I believe their easement is 50 feet, is what they're requesting and paying for. I'm not a landowner, so I don't know what, what they're trying to get typically, and that would be 25 feet on each side of the pipe. And then what, what the consultation and the planning zones are, it's put in our local government to, to try to protect both our citizens and the actual pipe itself. Because if the pipe is damaged, it's going to cause damage to our people and their livestock.
But yeah, I guess the point I'm getting at is for land use of the landowner, they could be restricted. They get, I mean, they get paid for the 25-foot or 50-foot, but they actually have restricted use for a quarter mile if it's going through the center of their quarter.
But they're not restricted. All we do is we ask them to, to talk. We've got one, we've got one incident in Brookings County where there was, there was actually a concrete pad poured over a natural gas pipeline. And, and they've got written agreements that if they've got to go in and dig that pipe out, the landowner's going to replace the concrete. It's, it's not, not the pipe. So I don't call that restricting the land use in the easement. They just, they had to work it out, but the, you know, the landowners had to work it out
Bob, are you aware of any permit surveillances that have been requested at this point for the pipeline?
Nope. The only, I've got more info, well, we've got the complete set of books downstairs in my office, so I've obviously went through them. And then just at that meeting up in Watertown, what, what they was discussing, they plan on doing.
And Brookings County has filed for party status, correct?
We have, as a county commissioner, with our state's attorney as the, the legal representation. And we fully intend, or I fully intend, you know, yeah, the PHMSA, the PHMSA new rules aren't in place yet, but I plan on going through the book and with the, with the subcommittee that hopefully we're going to be forming and have some questions where we're going to send, send, ask for more information from the Public Utilities Commission if the commission deems fit. I mean, it's, you're the party of interest, I work for you, so. But we want to, we want to stay on top of it, we don't want to...
Bob, I don't know if you can answer this, maybe Marty or Dan could, but trespass laws pertain to the surveying of land for the pipeline, is permission required to access the land to do surveys?
I'm sorry, that's, that's beyond my...
That's some of the questions that have been asked, I don't know if, if the sheriff, if...
If the landowner hasn't given permission and there's no court order, that'd be trespassing. I'd do that and send it to Dan.
And, I mean, that's some of the situations that have happened in other counties and I just, I didn't know if you had any specifics on that.
No, well, Brown County had an incident, but that was more, the landowner caught Summit personnel going into a machine shed and looking in the windows of the house or something, and he didn't think that was right. And then Summit came back and charged him. However, the, the judge dropped those charges. But there was a court order at that particular land for him to survey.
Okay. So the landowner would have to file charges against the company if they choose?
Right. I mean, to me, the property owners have the right to protect their land. And if they don't want somebody on their land, that's trespassing.
Any other questions, Ben?
Yeah, I guess maybe if Dan can remember better than me, but I thought that that, those court orders were then adjudicated at the Supreme Court and found to be invalid.
That's correct, I believe.
Are you, are you asking about specific, the trespass? Or what are you asking about for the court orders?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I thought that was part of, that was one of the first eminent domain decisions that they had made, the Supreme Court had made on the case.
Any other questions by the board? Anything else to add, Bob?
Nope, I believe I've, I'll be available for questions from the board.
I had one more, under these, on that Pipeline Trust section, the conclusions and knowledge gap recommendations that they had said, do you feel that, or haven't had a chance to look at, whether the new PHMSA addresses most of those because this is a year old?
I do, because the PHMSA documents, the February, January 15th this year, and obviously I haven't looked at all 336 pages, but, you know, they, they've taken 18, they've got 18 things that they, that they're recommending. And one thing about the PHMSA report is the National Transportation Safety Board, they're the ones that investigate any pipeline accidents. And then they make recommendations to PHMSA to adopt these new regulations. And this CO2 regulation's been out there for about 10 years, where the NTSB is saying, why haven't you taken action on it? So now they, they are taking action on it. So I find that interesting that now, now they're getting around to it. But it, being, being a past member of one of PHMSA's boards, I can see why it happens, unfortunately, because you think the Public Utilities Commission meetings are, are long and drawn out, try going to one PHMSA. And PHMSA does not supply coffee, so it's some of the longest meetings I've ever been to.
Yeah, one last question, I don't know if you necessarily would have this answer either, but because of the PHMSA regulations coming out on January 15th and the application date being November 18th, is there a grandfathering thing there, or is any new laws passed?
Well...
The application would have to apply to?
Well, Commissioner, what I'm going to do is, as we go with the, with the subcommittee and stuff, at least ask the PUC to follow what's in the book, PHMSA's recommendations. If, if they're going to approve it, to follow the latest guidelines. Because we don't want, we don't want the PUC to permit something and then they have to go back in and say, well, we need an extra valve or something like that. Do it now, do it right the first time, if you're going to do it. You know, we got the regulations, the regulations sooner or later is going to be there. It, it might take an extra month to get them approved with the new administration, we don't know.
But are those guidelines something that's automatically there federally, or does the state have to adopt them legislatively on top of?
I, I believe if, if it's dealing with the, with the product in this case, see, the, the problem of CO2 is, right now it's regulated as a gas. What the new regulations are doing is regulating it as what the liquid, high volatile liquid type thing. So it's, it's a much better document from what I, from what I read. And I killed a tree in front of it, so. But it was also interesting looking at the Mississippi report and looking at some of the pictures of the, you know, they're talking hilly country and, and a little different type of land than what we've, than what we're dealing with right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. After our update and discussion with County Development, Bob Hill, we have on the agenda discussion and possible action on Resolution Number 25-04, a resolution urging the South Dakota Legislature to pass eminent domain reform prohibiting the use of eminent domain for private gain. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
This is a resolution that was brought to me by other commissioners that they're also passing, kind of, it's a joint effort, just encouraging the South Dakota Legislature where a lot of this responsibility actually lays to take this action to protect our property rights in the state of South Dakota.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I take it that this resolution then reinforces the, the House Bill 1052 that has, going to be introduced, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Call the rule, please.
Miller?
Hi.
Hostler?
Hi.
Vanderwal?
Hi.
Post?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item number three, Action Director, County Development Director Robert Hill to start the process of creating a pipeline subcommittee. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have motion and a second. Mr. Hill, could you come forward, please? Bob, would you have any recommendations of either members or participants that you thought would be pertinent to put on this committee?
I would recommend representatives from the fire departments of the proposed pipeline. And another recommendation would be Jay Gilbertson from the East Dakota Water Development And then obviously members of the, of the public. I do believe that when the jail had a, had a committee going on, that, that the county commission's got a track record on how to, how to select individual citizens to serve on boards, so they could fill out like an application and send it to the county commission and let you guys, or the commission choose who the membership is. But fire, obviously, law enforcement needs to be involved with it. Doesn't necessarily have to be the sheriff, but a member of the law, of the sheriff's department, so they're aware of what's, what's going on in the county. Local fire departments, because they're the first responders that, that will be there.
Would other emergency management directors from neighboring counties be pertinent, or?
Well, we could probably invite them just as, as an ad hoc, I, I wouldn't make them a voting member of it, but I see no reason we couldn't invite them if they wanted to come to it. But it needs to be, stay within Brookings County, in my opinion, if it's a Brookings County committee dealing with Brookings County.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any suggestions?
And a township official, obviously, would, each township, I'd at least invite the chairman to send someone from the township, the affected townships on where it's going through.
All right. But I don't know if we'd want to limit it to the affected townships, would we? Because it's going to be a kind of a countywide deal, so if there would, if there would be other townships, representatives that would want to come in and sit on?
I would recommend that they fill out the application that you guys send out and let you choose. I mean, yeah, the size of the committee is up to, obviously, on the county commission and you guys selecting the members of it. Just be aware, the bigger the committee, the harder it is to get anything done, but we don't want to stack the committee one way or the other. You know, we want to have a fair, a fair committee, in my opinion, works better. And probably a member of the state's attorney's office, if at all possible.
Okay.
Just to keep us, keep us, in, in the past, when we did, we did some ordinances on mining, we had a member of the state's attorney was able to come to some of the meetings and give us some good guidance.
I don't know if we need the number of members today, but we can be thinking about that and taking a recommendation from Bob or whatever on them, on the number, then we'd get the application process out to the public to...
Yeah, I'll work with Commission Director Stephenson to get that, to get the sheet, the recommendation sheet or, or the application to be a member of the committee and I'll work with her and her staff and see if we can't get, get it moving. We don't want to, we don't want to procrastinate on this, we want to keep, keep moving, and that's why tomorrow... that's why tomorrow, I'm going to Pierre for Capitol in the day, just to see what they're talking about out there, on the pipeline regulations at the state level.
Any other comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwal?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number four on the agenda is a public comment period. There's a five time, there's a five-minute timeline per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to nine o'clock. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting. We have a quite lengthy list here. We will start, I will give you a, a five-minute window. I will give you a one-minute warning to kind of wrap, wrap things up, and stop you at the end of five minutes. Thank you for showing up today, and sharing your concerns. We start with John Myers. Would you please come forward and introduce yourself?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is J.D. Myers. And before I forget, Mr. Post's question about the easement width, it's 50-foot, and Mr. Hill pretty well nailed it on what we're doing there. I work for Summit Carbon Solutions. I also come from a background in ag. I'm a fifth-generation farmer in north-central Iowa. I joined the project about three years ago after seeing the importance, the role complete, importance the project can play in keeping ethanol and the ag economy strong for the next generations. I understand the importance of protecting land and ensuring safe practices for infrastructure projects like this pipeline. As you are forming a Pipeline Subcommittee, I encourage you to take a closer look at the extensive regulatory framework already in place for the pipelines. It's critical to approach this topic with accurate and fair information. Mr. Hill teed it up perfect. I mean, he went through the FEMSA and all the different regulations, and how many rules, and framework is already in place. But to start, FEMSA is a federal body that regulates pipelines like ours, specifically CO2 pipelines, that are governed under Title 49 of the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 195, which is a 121-page document laying out the safety and reporting requirements for hazardous liquid and CO2. These regulations cover every phase of a pipeline's life, design, construction, operation, and maintenance. Beyond Part 195, our pipeline also falls under Regulations Part 190, 196, 198, and 199. At the state level, the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission, the PUC, has additional oversight for pipeline systems. Other permits required for our project include the Federal Nationwide Permit 58 for utility line activities, which ensures compliance with the Clean Water Act, the River and Harbor Act, the National Historic Preservation Act, and on top of that, we must secure Section 408 permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, addressing impacts to civil works projects. There's also a joint permit process involving the Corps and the Department of Natural Resources to ensure compliance with natural quality, or water quality certifications, floodplain permits, protections for natural habitats, and endangered species. The South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources oversees stormwater, de-watering, water discharge, and water allocation. As you can see, the state and federal agencies play a massive role in ensuring the safety and environmental integrity of these projects. I understand it can be overwhelming to familiarize yourself with all these regulatory bodies and proceedings. If you find it helpful, I'd be happy to return to Brookings County and walk through these regulations in detail, and discuss any questions or concerns you may have. There's a ton of misinformation out there. Mr. Hill has done an extremely well job looking at the facts, from what I can, from the way it sounds. With forming a committee to evaluate pipelines, I'd recommend drawing on the expertise of people who specialize in these areas, bringing in subject matter experts, such as those who focus on environmental issues, soil health, water resources, construction, welding, operations, and safety. This will give you a comprehensive understanding of the regulations already in place, and the steps we're taking to ensure compliance. To put this in perspective, the PUC in South Dakota employs a staff of 27, hires additional third-party experts to spend a full year evaluating projects like ours. It's no small undertaking.
One minute.
One of the most common concerns I've heard from communities like yours is about setbacks. Setbacks are safety regulations, and as such, they fall under the FEMSA jurisdiction through the Pipeline Safety Act. Federal courts have ruled that local ordinances related to setbacks cannot override the Secretary's Transportation's authority to regulate pipeline safety. Just last week, FEMSA released new proposed regulations addressing setbacks, further reinforcing that these are safety standards under federal jurisdiction. As someone who's spent my life working and advocating for ag, I know how important it is to protect the land, water, and livelihoods of all those who depend on it. I also think projects like this, that make our ag economy strong by enhancing the existing infrastructure that we have in place, is something that has to happen for our next generation. Something like two-thirds of the corn used in South Dakota is, is made into ethanol. 96% of that ethanol is exported from the state. This project will open up new markets for those exported gallons, and be sold at a premium in today's market, or to today's market. It will create expansion for the ethanol production, and improve corn basis for local farmers for years to come. I hope we can continue to work together and address questions and concerns you may have about our project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list, Gerald Warman.
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary Wagner?
Good morning. I appreciate the fact that you have dug into this after many of us have been before, you've been present before, with our concerns. I think I'm more confused now than I have been before, but I do want to say that I have been an attendee at the dismiss pipeline meeting that the PUC presented, only one meeting, I didn't get to the rest of them, but it was the majority of the speakers, actually, there were 18, that were against the pipeline, and only six at that meeting that were pro-pipeline people. And I'm going to go back to one of the things that was said at one of our summer meetings, that we really don't need a pipeline. The, exploring the alternatives, such as building methanol plants to utilize the carbon dioxide locally, would add value to our farmers here in South Dakota, instead of making the investors of Summit rich. That's all I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Wagner?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Matt Wagner. I am a resident of Brookings County and a board member of Oslo Township. I come before you today on behalf of Oslo Township residents, urging the implementation of a two-mile minimum setback for the CO2 pipeline in Brookings County. The September 15th, 2023 FEMSA letter to navigator CO2 confirms that pipeline citing is largely a state and county decision. This means we not only have the authority to act, but we have the responsibility to do so. The CO2 pipeline is proposed to run through our county, and regardless of where it begins, where it ends, or what hooks up to this pipeline, its priority must be public safety. On January 10th, as Mr. Hill had mentioned earlier, in 2025, the US Department of Transportation released the latest FEMSA notice of proposed rulemaking, the MPRM. If there was any doubt about the danger of a CO2 pipeline, consider, the federal agency responsible for regulating them explicitly includes hazardous in its title. I reviewed the 346-page MPRM, and I want to highlight some of the critical regulatory gaps FEMSA identified in the CO2 pipeline management, and the analysis of the 2020 Sotarsia, Mississippi, carbon pipeline rupture, a real-world example of the significant dangers high-pressure CO2 pipelines pose. Key risks identified were, CO2 behaves differently than natural gas. When released, it's 1.5 times denser than air, displacing oxygen and creating asphyxiation, page 24. CO2 pipeline operate at extreme pressures, 2,000 to 2,300 PSI, far exceeding natural gas pipelines, 500 to 1,400. Simulated ruptures show CO2 releases significantly more mass than natural gas, page 26. CO2 settles in low-lying areas, increasing risks for rural counties. This was observed in the 2020 Sotarsia, Mississippi accident, page 27. FEMSA expects more CO2 pipeline accidents due to a network expansion, but lacks historical data to predict their frequency, page 28. A minimum two-mile setback is already under consideration in FEMSA's report, though in some cases, even two miles may not be enough, page 82. Current regulations do not adequately address these risks. FEMSA proposes new safety measures for pipelines within two miles of homes, businesses, and public spaces, page 102. After Sotarsia's rupture, CO2 levels still exceeded 30,000 parts per million, more than a mile from the release point hours later, page 106. Finally, CO2 pipelines present an untested, unregulated risk. As elected officials, we are responsible for protecting public safety. While many concerns exist about this pipeline today, I have focused on the validated and documented risks outlined by the FEMSA, and our duty is to act on them. I urge the implementation of a two-mile minimum setback, and take immediate action to protect Brookings County residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Carla Dieter?
Matt did a wonderful job of pointing out some of the dangers of, of the pipelines. I live right around Lake Campbell, and Lake Campbell has about 100 homes already around Lake Campbell. You just approved two Platts extra in the, in the Turtle Bay, and they're planning another 35 homes right around Lake Campbell. I will be within one and a half miles of this pipeline, proposed pipeline. So, this, this is, you all know, Lake Campbell is a populated area. People use it for boating, camping, fishing, there's the Country Club golfing area out there, so this, this is impacting a lot of people right around that Lake Campbell area. And Matt did a wonderful job of pointing out some of the, some of the things that happened in Sotarsia. And the rupture occurred at 7:06 PM, and it spewed carbon dioxide for about four hours. Now let that sink in. And carbon dioxide in open air can disperse, but third-party monitoring of that accident that night in Sotarsia showed that potent clouds of CO2 hung in the air for hours. So, we're looking at a big problem here, if there's a, if there's a pipeline rupture. Not only that, but it, the cloud of CO2 hampered emergency response, combustion engines need oxygen to work, and cars stopped running. So, that's another issue that we need to be mindful of. RL 21 was voted down by 65 of 66 counties, and you know that. 59% voted no, 40, or 40, 59% voted no, 41% yes. We already have, in my opinion, you already have enough people that, in our Brookings County, that have voted this down, that you would be able to change that ordinance. So, I highly encourage you to move forward, to have landowners that are affected with this project on this committee, and to listen to the people. Thank you.
Next, Diana Page?
Hi, Diana Page, Brookings, in Lake Campbell. I asked our homeowners insurance person if they would cover any damage to our guests on our property, or any damage to our property from a pipeline explosion, which it is proposed a mile and a half west of Lake Campbell, pretty close. Anyway, the agent said, I'm not touching it. You're not gonna get insured. We have nothing to do with it. So, last fall, I asked a Summit rep and a pipeline, a pro-pipeline legislator, speaking at a meeting, who pays for the damage and injuries to our guests and property, if there's an explosion from a pipeline that's not on my property? And their answer, both answered, we don't know. So, I urge you to maybe check with your insurance companies, to see how much protection you have, from a company that has lots of LLCs, that don't have to have any money in them, to see how much money you're gonna get for damage to your property, and to your people that live or are with you at the time of an explosion. Thank you.
Next is Jane Paver.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, thank you, thank you for taking the powerful first step to protect the citizens of Brookings County. May I please wholeheartedly encourage you to take the next step as well? Many of the things that I wrote about here have been covered by Mr. Hill, thank you, and Matt, and other speakers, so I'm going to reduce this down to, please consider what's actually happening with the Summit Carbon Solutions route, right now. This past week, while attending the PUC hearings, we learned that one farmer here in our state was refused by the state to build a water pipeline crossing a public schoolyard. The state immediately canceled his request. At that same time, the Summit Carbon Solutions highly volatile liquid CO2 pipeline is planned to cross that same schoolyard. Without updated setback ordinances, that could happen here as well. Our concern is valid, and as such, with the committees established now by Mr. Hill and his organization, I propose that Brookings County Commissioners adopt our own ordinances, in line with the ordinance of Sphinx, McPherson, and Brown Counties. Thank you very much.
Next, Katie Willington?
Hi, my name is Katie Willington. I'm a resident of Brookings County in Oslo Township. My house is 1.5 miles from the pipeline to the east and to the south. I first want to second the comments of both Raisi Wagner regarding exploring alternative options, which are advantageous to us as a community, as well as the request and comments of Matt Wagner. I'd like to make some additional comments. First, the safety concerns associated with potential leaks or ruptures of a CO2 pipeline are profound and cannot be overstated. Previous incidents, such as the rupture in Sotarsia, Mississippi, vividly illustrate the dangers posed by such failures. When the infrastructure fails, as Carla just described, it can lead to life-threatening situations that encompass the possibility of severe injuries or even death. The threat extends beyond humans. The deprivation of oxygen due to potential CO2 leaks poses a grave risk to animals, livestock, and wildlife in our area. Due to the Sotarsia rupture, emergency responders face significant challenges in reaching victims trapped in a suffocating environment. The nature of CO2 displaces oxygen in the air, which can quickly render individuals incapable of breathing and combustion engines from functionality. Second, I note that Summit claims that they can build the safest CO2 pipeline ever made. However, it is my understanding that Summit has never actually built a CO2 pipeline, or any pipeline, so they in fact have no safety record to speak of. To that end, I would urge you to bear in mind your role as public officials to protect the general health and safety of local residents, and act accordingly. Thank you.
Next is Peter Williams?
Hi, Peter Williams, resident of Brookings County. My response is less judicious than most of my colleagues, but I agree with everything said by all but the first speaker. The thing that gets me about this is, this pipeline is pressurized to the same PSI as a CO2 tank, sorry, not a CO2 tank, a scuba tank. And I know of people injured by those, and that's the thought that keeps me up at night. Thank you very much.
Carrie Thompson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you for considering all of our well-being. My name is Carrie Thompson. I'm from Parnell Township over by Elkton, and I am a landowner. I am not directly affected by the pipeline going in, but you can't live in our community without knowing someone that it will be, or their families. I was at the dismit meeting, so some of this may seem redundant to other people that have been there, but, so I won't spend a lot of time on the things I said there, but this is not about progress moving us forward. It's about money. I believe, for one thing, that they have come here for the fact that South Dakota has some, a little bit more lenient regulations on things, so that we're able to be progressive and not have, but with the responsibility of the citizens to maintain, you know, the right things, and make sure that our ground is taken care of and we're kept safe. We've gotten progressive things here because of that. I do believe that some people take advantage of the fact that we are, don't have as many regulations, you know, for our own sake, to be able to move forward without so much government regulation like the other states. This is not about the greater good. It is definitely for private good. We will not be making money off of this. It will cause, I believe it'll cause hardship. Our fire departments do not have the money to, they will give us money, but it's not even going to come close to covering the expenses we'll need for the equipment to deal with these emergencies. Not to mention, we have fired, most of our fire departments are volunteer. They're already shorthanded. Are they going to want to deal with this? I sure wouldn't blame them if they didn't. It would be a huge health risk for them, and bless their hearts for taking care of us as much as they do. It has lasting health effects. If you don't die from it, you, there will be lasting health effects. If there's a leak, it takes time for that monitoring system to notify somebody. They're not going to know the minute, you know, if it's in my pasture, and I've got Snoopy cows at my house. Anything happening, they run right over to look. Then I got dead cows. I mean, and that will happen before anybody shows up to take care of it, or to notify anybody to take care of it. As human beings, it will happen, that mistakes will be made. They had mentioned, Summit had mentioned that, you know, it creates jobs. Well, if you've been on the boards for very long, you know that we don't have enough people for the factories and stuff around here as it is to fill those jobs. But then I've heard that they bring their own people in. Well, that's not going to do our communities any good, because then they'll also probably leave. So then they come in, create, you know, we have to have housing and things like that for them, and then they leave. Okay? And if they did, you know, decide they liked it here, because it's a likable place, that's why we're all here, you know, that would be fine.
One minute.
Okay. The people that are close to these pipelines, how do they, if they're within that, you know, say they're only 400 feet, can I build a shed on my place without going through, I mean, I have to go and ask permission to everybody if it's within that time, or that area? That's kind of not right. The other thing, do we know that if there's these containment tanks that are through the place, if we get groundwater in them, what happens to that gas? If we, if a six-inch pipe, if we allow a six-inch pipe into our community, then all of a sudden, we're going to build and create more gas, do we need a bigger pipe after that? How do we stop that? It's kind of like letting a genie out of the bottle. And big businesses, that's how it works. I worked for a big company for 30-some years, and once you lay the groundwork of letting something like that in, there's, it's only formality that it becomes more and more of what they want. This is not something that's good for our community. This is all about them benefiting themselves. Thank you.
Next is Robert Hexum.
I'm Robert Hexum. We have land right along the pipeline. This statement is product of the proposed Summit Carbon Pipeline and its intended route, especially pertaining to Midary Township of Brookings County. We own and operate our modest fifth-generation family farm south of Brookings, near the Big Sioux River and Lake Campbell. We are also investors and owners in the Lake Area Corn Processors. With the intended pipeline route, we will have at least one and a half miles, up to two and a half miles, affected by this pipeline, which involves land near the Lake Campbell Outlet, the Big Sioux River, and also many wetlands. We've been trying to work with several state and local bodies to get an important dike fixed, and due to regulations, it's now going on 15 years and still not done. This company is promising potential, but can't guarantee anything to landowners or citizens. The mark is always moving. We have had several flooding roads and bridges, broken dikes, and other natural event situations to contend with daily activity and productivity on our land. We have persisted and prevailed. A pipeline, and in this case, a carbon pipeline, is not natural, but man-made. It's a choice. As farmers, ranchers, businesspeople, and property owners, we all have paid the privilege of owning land. Using eminent domain is not an option for this pipeline to build. That is like going to the emergency room to have your toenails trimmed. This pipeline is one option to transport, not the only one. The cost is too high for the inhabitants of the land in which it is to be placed. There are too many unanswered questions regarding construction, maintenance, safety, costs, liability, and accountability. Once they have the pipeline and easements in place, it won't be long before more lines are added in that easement area, and they can always resell those easements, but it doesn't mean there will be added benefits or compensation. I applaud the South Dakota Supreme Court, the officials in Brookings County Commission for recognizing this is not an eminent domain issue. There are other ways that this CO2 can be captured and utilized. These companies, I believe there have been four so far that have tried to push this pipeline through our state, have yet to be able to check off the first item on a list of four for the PUC to consider them for a permit. Number one, must comply with all laws and regulations. Number two, will not pose a threat to economic condition. Number three, will not pose a threat to the welfare of its inhabitants. And number four, will not unduly interrupt progress. The PUC are the ones that say yes or no to these folks. Please continue to protect our inhabitants, both human and animal. I will also say that we will have two residents within less than 1,000 feet of this pipeline. So, I wish we were a mile and a half, but we're not. It's right in our backyard. So, thank you very much.
Next is Chase Jensen.
My name is Chase Jensen. I was a resident of Brookings County until this last year moved down to Lincoln County. And I also work with Dakota Rural Action, and in that role have worked and attended meetings like this throughout the state, and followed along very closely with counties' passing ordinances. There was a couple of comments I wanted to make. First of all, I thank you for the actions that you have taken this morning. I think that it's clear y'all are taking serious the need to bring this new project into the existing regulations that did not conceive of this type of thing when they were put in place. The first thing I'd like to name is that you do have authority to pass zoning ordinances, to pass setbacks, and I just want to highlight the logic of the comments of the first speaker, because they reflect what has been said in counties up and down the state by the company. The logic they would have you believe is that FEMSA regulates the safety of everything to do with these projects, and that the states hold citing authority. But then they want to add in that setbacks are safety and not citing. And when they do that, what's the conundrum we land with? Well, it's that the feds can't tell you where it goes, because they don't have citing authority, and the states and local government can't tell you where it goes, because setbacks are safety. So, who gets to decide where this goes? Who gets to look at a rupture model? Who gets to look at the future development of the county plans and your economic growth models, projections? And then who gets to look at the route? All three of those things at the same time and make a decision? Well, they would have you believe that the only people are the CEOs or shareholders of the private company proposing the project. I've seen the company threaten and act out lawsuits against counties for even establishing a moratorium on these projects, while a planning committee looked into it and developed reasonable common sense, not overly restrictive laws, and then those lawsuits were dropped. We've also seen the company ask the PUC, as they have again, to preempt all local ordinances, and in the case of Navigator's application, that was not moved on by the PUC. They upheld the local ordinances, and then Summit dropped their motion, seeing the writing on the wall. They've made that motion again, and perhaps most devastating to the argument that they're making to you is a letter from FEMSA that was sent to the Navigator CEO, as well as Summit's CEO, a few years ago, and I'd just like to read a few things from this. From the section, "The Role of Local Governments." "FEMSA cannot prescribe the location or routing of a pipeline, and cannot prohibit the construction of non-pipeline buildings in proximity to a pipeline. Local governments have traditionally exercised broad powers to regulate land use, including setback distances and property development that includes development in the vicinity of pipelines. Nothing in the federal pipeline safety law impinges on these traditional prerogatives of local or state government, so long as officials do not attempt to regulate the field of pipeline safety preempted by federal law." One of the most helpful ways this has been explained to me is to consider a building code compared to a zoning code, right? And so, you all, in your elected capacity, can't tell Summit what thickness of pipe to use, you can't tell them how to engineer their valves, but you can see where the project goes. And as you've taken a step to form the committee, I see you are taking that seriously. But it's important to point out that even this morning, federal law has been misconstrued to you by the company, who is not wanting any regulations to be put in place that they would have to abide by. The last comment I'll make for consideration in this subcommittee would be, as was stated, FEMSA regulates everything to do with the construction and operation of the project. The second they stop operating this pipeline, this asset, becomes a liability, that the company steps away from all legal liability. So, in addition to setbacks, I think it's worth considering the abandonment of this project and potentially requiring bonds or securities from the company, so that the land can be reclaimed afterwards per the desires of impacted landowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Pritchard, Trenton Township, Brookings County. I came and talked last week to Bob Hill with the township issue, and then we started talking about what would be going on at the meeting today, what Bob would present. And I told Bob that I would come here and I would comment and thank him. And I am thanking Bob and all of you for taking us seriously, for finally getting this on the agenda. Bob said that he was going to spend all day, which he, as a county employee, yesterday had a holiday. He was going to spend all day yesterday in his office reviewing his presentation. So, I thank you, Bob, and I thank the commission. I would like to maybe clarify some of the statements that came out earlier. I have been involved in this CO2 pipeline issues for three, going on three and a half years, because our property was involved with Navigator. They, as we all know, they have left. They abandoned the project. There was, I think Bob did say that he didn't think there was any restricted land use involved with these easements of CO2. Like I said, our experience was with Navigator. When you read our easement, which of course we did not sign, it's probably an inch and a half thick, and they sent it every time. After we denied them, they came back with another offer of money, and it kept going up, and we'd get another huge mailing of an easement. When you read that, there's, you need to go to a lawyer. There was a statement in there, it was our pasture that they wanted to go through. They would install a 16-foot gate into our fence line. Now, you talk about non-restricted land use, that would be locked 24/7. They would provide the lock and key. If we wanted to enter, we had to ask them. Now, is that not restricted land use? If I want, I could buy the lock and key and provide them with the key, but I was responsible to keep that thing locked 24/7, and no way, no amount of money is where someone telling me what I can do with my property. I do want to also say that the township, there was something mentioned that the county doesn't allow zoning done by the townships. I wouldn't call it zoning, but Title 8 in the township rules, 8.2-1, paragraph 4, I was just reading it last night, does allow the township, for protection and safety of their communities, to enact ordinances and restrictions. We, it's in our laws. We do have that right. I don't know if you want to call it zoning, but we can enact ordinances, and we are going to talk about that. So, if the county doesn't move forward, you're going to get individual townships moving on this, and then it'll be, you'd be better off making a county-wide, as was stated, two-mile setback according to FEMSA regulations. And the trespassing of Jared Bosley in Brown County wasn't just somebody peeking in the windows. They, his wife was in the shower, they walked in the house, scared her to death, and they drilled 90-foot holes into their property without to death, and they drilled 90-foot holes into their property without permission. So anyway, like I said, we've been at it for three and a half years. We know a lot of the details. We've researched and looked at it. I'm glad you're on board. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Laura Zord.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am not a Brookings County resident. I'm a Lake County landowner that's affected by the pipeline and I'm also a Moody County resident and landowner as well. I'm married to a fifth-generation farmer and I'm raising sixth-generation farm boys, okay? We are very much opposed to this pipeline. I first want to thank you all for putting CO2 pipeline discussion on the agenda. I really commend you for it. Neighboring Moody County, I think, as you know, already has a CO2 pipeline ordinance in place. I believe that's largely why the proposed route skirts around Moody County. If you look at it, the direct route would be to diagonally go across Moody County, but instead they go around it and go Lake County, Moody County line, okay? It is, per FEMA, like everyone has said, you do have citing authority. That is well within your authority. I believe the letter's been provided to you previously. I also want to clarify that per state statute, townships as well, as Teri just said, have the authority to enact ordinances. That's per state law. It's also per state law, so that you're aware, 5% of the registered voters in your county have the ability to petition and propose, do an initiated ordinance. So you can look that, your state's attorney can sure look that up for you, but that's state law. 5% of the registered voters can petition and get an ordinance on the books. So by law, if we petition the voters and get 5% of the signatures and give that over to you guys, you have 60 days for a special election and then it's on the books. So I would encourage you to not wait for townships and residents to go about this on their own. I would say if you really want to say in what's going on in your county, you're going to have to act fast because everyone is obviously ready to do something if you don't act. So that's really your only choice in order to have a say in it is to do something now. The proper way, I believe, to handle this is no different than a CAFO, right? You have an ordinance, you have setbacks, and you have a conditional use permit for these things, okay? It's, this would be no different. Why is there a setback for a hog barn but not a hazardous liquid pipeline? That doesn't make any sense. You know, you have setbacks for all sorts of things, right? Doesn't mean you're anti-CAFO. It just means that you want to keep your dwellings and your residents safe and happy because in the end, I want to do whatever I want on my land, but it cannot affect other people's land. That's really what it boils down to, right, for property rights. I can do whatever I want as long as it doesn't affect my neighbor. This would affect our neighbors. And that would be on top of the PUC's permit. And then I also want to read some comments to you from Paul Blackburn, who is an attorney that works for Bold Alliance and he's, I would say, an expert on pipeline safety and ordinances. He says, "One purpose of setbacks is to give the county leverage in negotiations over route and emergency alert and response resources. At present, a CO2 pipeline can pick a route, present it to the county, and be willing to discuss it, but the county would have no leverage to change the route. The company is currently able to unilaterally decide on the amount of emergency response support to provide. The ordinance would give the county legal leverage to help keep people safe." And that's all anybody wants here. So thank you for your time.
Next is Lawrence Novotny. Okay, we do have a couple of comments submitted.
The first, the board received an email from Deb and Rick Bortonum. They have property. They said that we have property. That is, along the proposed CO2 pipeline, please help stop this. We are, they live in Brookings County, Midary Township. Thanks. Protect our property. And then we did receive a letter also from Melissa Granham. She said, "My name is Melissa Granham and my husband Corey and I are landowners in Brookings County who are within approximately one-half mile from the proposed carbon capture pipeline. We attended one of the Public Utilities Commission informational meetings this week in Watertown, South Dakota, and we are deeply concerned about Summit Carbon Solutions' current application and them being able to fulfill the responsibilities of the application based on South Dakota Public Utilities Commission Information Guide to citing pipelines. According to the guide, it states that, 'The applicant that seeks the PUC's approval must show its proposed project, one, will comply with all applicable laws and rules, two, will not pose a threat of serious injury to the environment nor to the social or economic condition of inhabitants or expected inhabitants in the citing area, three, will not substantially impair the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants, and four, will not unduly interfere with the orderly development of the region with due consideration having been given to the view of the governing bodies or affected local units of government.' This is the second application that has been submitted to the PUC by Summit Carbon Solutions, with the first being denied because the applicant was unable to fulfill the responsibilities stated, especially the first one of complying with all applicable laws and rules. Upon listening to the presentation in Watertown by Summit Carbon Solutions on January 16th, the applicant did little to prove or address that they have made significant changes to their application to show that they are fulfilling the responsibilities required by the PUC, and I urge the Board of Commissioners to continue to review and adapt stricter rules, laws, and county ordinances to protect the citizens and their private landowner rights of Brookings County as well as South Dakotans and not allow this potentially dangerous pipeline. From what was presented at the PUC meeting, I do not feel confident that they will take every precaution to ensure that they will meet all of their responsibilities for the PUC guidelines. I strongly support prohibiting the use of eminent domain for private gain. At the PUC meeting in Watertown, Summit Carbon Solutions verified that it was a private company and there is no reason why private companies should be able to take away private landowner rights for financial gain. I am also concerned that Summit Carbon Solutions will be able to fulfill the responsibilities for not posing a threat of serious injury to the environment in the second point listed above. At the meeting, the applicant had copies of the proposed pipeline map, which detailed the route as well as where the shut-off valves were going to be. Attached to this note are pictures of the maps of Brookings and Lake Counties that were available at the PUC meeting. As you can see by the proposed map, there are significantly more shut-off valves shown in red along the maps, along the areas where it is either a lake region or a flood plain. One can interpret that as Summit Carbon Solutions understanding that those areas have a higher likelihood of having a leak, and with the likelihood of a leak, it would also contaminate the environment. This would have an impact on the groundwater, animals, and aquatic life as well as any individuals who are in close proximity to the pipeline. Summit Carbon Solutions has not released any plume studies, so the extent of the danger and impact of a leak is unknown. It is known that this pipeline is under extreme pressure and when a rupture occurs, it opens up like a zipper and all of the contents between shut-off valves are released and affects area life. Without a plume study, we do not know the impact of the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants, so being able to fulfill that responsibility stated above is impossible to prove. With the last responsibility listed about not interfering with the development of a specific region, that is also not, that is not also able to be met, there are developments that are happening along Lake Campbell and surrounding areas that are going to be impacted. Allowing this pipeline in our county will decrease property values around the pipeline. It will also decrease productivity of area crops by taking the CO2 out of the atmosphere that is necessary for plant growth and increase the threat of a dangerous pressurized product being released into the atmosphere and affecting people, animals, and surrounding areas. When released, the carbon dioxide reduces that amount of oxygen in the air and also shuts down combustion engines in our emergency vehicles, thus paralyzing a proper emergency response within an area of a leak. With this information, I urge the Board of Commissioners to vote to adapt stricter rules, laws, and ordinances to protect the citizens of Brookings County.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the comments. I guess I'd like to say thank you for, citizens, for sharing your concerns. I'd also like to thank our staff for all the work you've done for completing the presentation and Bob coming in yesterday and completing it also. Does Commissioners have any other comments? Hearing none, thank you. Moving on with our agenda. Item P is action to approve the appointment of Paul Johnson to fill an unexpired term on the weed and pest board ending December 31st, 2026. Have motion approved?
Move to approve.
Second. Have motion to second. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item Q, action approve the appointment of Tyler Jensen to fill an opening on the extension board ending January 9th, 2026. Have motion approve?
Move, approve, or second.
Have motion second. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. I'd vote, I will not. I'll sit out to vote. Motion carried. Item number nine, Commission Department Director's report.
The Veterans Service Office report was included with my staff report, two DAV van rides and 11 Beta rides, three outreach events as well. Matt Pillar, our Veterans Service Officer, was looking at a program through the Sioux Falls VA that can provide rides for veterans as well. He's still kind of researching some of those options. Hopes that will maybe save the money on Beta rides. Right now, we pay $30 per ride currently for Beta. You know, the DAV van, we have specific volunteers that go through a pretty rigorous program or application process and those individuals who are kind of approved and vetted through that process are getting to be fewer and fewer. So a couple of years ago, we looked at having Beta provide rides when we can't have a D, or we don't have a DAV rider. So Matt's kind of looking at some things there. I do need a consensus from the board to publish a public hearing for a supplemental budget resolution. Kind of at the end of the year, we don't know, like the Rural Access Infrastructure Fund is the one item. We don't know what we're kind of looking at for dollars, so I need to do a supplemental budget just to give the budget authority within that fund. And then also the Commission Projects Fund within the general, the Commission Budget within the general fund. So do I have a consensus to move forward with publishing that? Yes? Getting all the heads nodded, okay. The general fund surplus information for year-end 2024 ended at 29%. That's very good. We needed to be under 40. Our goal is always around that 25 to 30%, so very happy with where we ended. And that 29% is also just kind of just above the 10-year average of 26%. So we did a good job there. Included with my report is a notice of public hearing from the City of Volga for a tax incremental District Number Eight. That's going to be before their city zoning board on the 28th at 11:00 and then the Volga City Council will hear that on February 3rd at 5:30. So if you're interested in that, additional information is included with my staff report. Other than that, just some of the upcoming dates. Tomorrow, I believe most of you are headed out to Pierre for Brookings Day at the Capitol. And then looking further out into February, we'll be closed for President's Day on the 17th. There is that Pipeline Association Local Pipeline Response Training out at Dakota Bank Center on the 26th at 11:30. And then the Ledge Conference, March 1 through 4. I don't think we need to change that Commission meeting on the 4th because Commissioner VanderWaal will be the only one that's going to that meeting. And so you and I can stay in touch, Kelly, on whether or not you can call in or what that looks like, kind of depending on the schedule and whatnot. So I think that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions? Okay, State's Attorney Office report, 2024 Brookings County statistics.
Well, I think, yeah, big picture approach. Crime was down a little bit from previous years, but you know, in the last five years, it's maintained its pretty similar levels across the board. Here we have the felony conviction stats, you know, pretty similar from what we've seen in previous years. Nothing big that stood out in terms of the felony convictions here. Most of those child abuse convictions that you see at the very top there, a lot of that has to do with child passengers in a DUI case. So I prosecute that as felony child abuse. If you're operating a vehicle under the influence and you have a passenger with you, that's a minor. That's prosecuted as a felony. So that's part of a large portion of those eight convictions. Scrolling down to the misdemeanors. You know, we see DUIs primarily are the main component of the misdemeanor convictions. Down a little bit from last year, but as you can see, pretty consistent across the board. In 2020, we had that 20% increase in DUIs and that's unfortunately kind of been maintained here for the last four years. Then you can see the marijuana convictions obviously have gone down. A lot of that has to do with diversion programs that we have here in the county. So if you're cited for marijuana offenses, you're coming in as a first-time offender, a lot of that's referred to our diversion program. So if you're successful, we don't count that as a conviction. So that's the drop-off there. And then going down to... Yeah. Class twos, you know, no insurance, obviously. In the middle there is the primary one for class twos, other traffic violations, but you know, pretty consistent across the board. The underage consumption down there, those are individuals that chose not to do the diversion program. And so that's the number there. Yeah, just looking at that, I mean, it looks like, you know, theft has gone up. Most of the shoplifting that we prosecute in Brookings County stems from Walmart. Walmarts are our biggest victim as it relates to shoplifting. And so a lot of those theft convictions you see there are reported out of Walmart. And they work pretty closely, obviously, with Brookings Police Department in that regard. And then I think we have, if you go down, keep going down. Yeah, this is just domestic violence specific to aggravated assault, simple assault, disorderly conduct. Kind of saw a middle number there, down from years past but up from last year. And then I think we have one more. Yeah, just breakdown of DUIs. So you see the... About the same. So if you guys have any questions, it's pretty straightforward. You know, that's obviously a lot of the work that my deputies and I do to cycle all these cases through the court system, you know, every year, working with our law enforcement partners and victims and witnesses to get these cases processed and through the system. So... That's all I got.
Any questions? Thank you. Item number 11, Commissioner Reports and Discussion Items. Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. On Tuesday, January 7th, I attended the zoning meeting. On the 14th, on Tuesday, I attended the interviews for the BCOAC director. On Wednesday, the 15th, I attended the evening PUC meeting in Sioux Falls. On Friday, the 17th, we had a short 214 slash 16A meeting. And then on Saturday, the 18th, I attended the Republican meeting at the BCOAC. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Post.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I didn't get it written down, so I won't have all my dates right, but I did attend the PUC meeting in DeSmet, and the hiring meeting that we had, and also the Brookings County Republican meeting at the BCLC.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller.
Uh, thank you. On the, on the 13th, I attended the Volga Fire Department meeting. Great, great turnout there. Enjoyed that. On the 16th, I also was in DeSmet at the POC meeting, and was also in attendance for the interviews for the director for the OAC. And I also met with Jason Merkley at the hospital about my appointment to the board there, and he gave me a tour through the hospital and brought me up to date with what's happening there. And it was, it was a fascinating time with Jason. So that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Hostler.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Jensen. On the 9th, I, we had a Zoom Research Park meeting. On the 14th, of course, attended that special commission meeting for OAC interviews. On the 15th, we had a BEDC board meeting. And then on the 16th, over in DeSmet, I did attend that pipeline, pipeline meeting. It was very informative. I believe there was 31 total people that, that vote, or that talked on either for and against the pipeline. On the 16th, also, before that, I had a meeting with one of the BEDC members in relationship to the task force for the combination of the four entities here in town. And then on the 17th, I met with another BEDC member in response to that task force, that I did accept a position on there for, to look at if this is something that these four organizations do, should do, and if it is the way to go about it. So that is my report.
Thank you. On the 9th, I attended a pandemic planning meeting out at the hospital on the 13th. Also, I went over to the Volga, Volga Fireman's Feed, a lot of good food there, and congratulations, Commissioner Miller, on winning a firearm. On the 14th, also did the interview process for the BCOAC director. On the 16th, I attended the Public Utilities Commission meeting over in DeSmet on the Carbon Solutions Pipeline. And on the 17th, participated in the 214th Street Discussion on the planning, plan for our planning grant. With that, we move on to our next agenda item, is executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law?
Marty has something.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I, I should have, at my, I missed this, that the 29th and the 30th, I'll be in Pierre. I didn't get my travel request in. On the 29th, we have a winter legislative talk with all the other sheriffs and so forth. And then I guess we serve pie and ice cream to the legislators. And then the 30th, the morning of the 30th is Sheriff's Day, so we all dress up and parade around, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for the interruption.
You need an approval then, or?
Well, we actually do, I do a blanket travel request for legislative purposes at the beginning of the year, so you would fall under that, Marty, so I think it's fine. But it's good to note that you'll be going.
Okay. Sorry.
Item number 12 is executive sessions in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, parentheses 1 and parentheses 4, personnel and contract negotiations. Have a motion to enter executive session? So moved. Have a motion to second, all in favor? Opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Dave, we're going to hang up with you, and then I'll give you a call back here in just a few minutes.
All right.
All right. Thanks. Bye.